I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, will you call the roll?
I will call. Hockeck?
Here.
Wilkers?
Here.
Hughes?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Jaffa?
Here.
Chair Homdell?
Here.
You have eight votes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are citizen comments on anything not appearing on our agenda today. Those signed in to speak will be given first. Right, and speaking will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone signed in to speak?
Oh, yes.
Madam clerk.
Yes, ma'am, there is. Deb Altermatt. But it's only a gentleman. No, it's fine. That was, you can speak today. Not public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Deborah Altermatt, Seward citizen, an old time PACAB, it's nice to see it, feels like old home week. I was on PACAB from 1998 until 2015, and then 15 through 17 on city council. So, I've been around the block a couple of times, and I think you guys are doing a great job, and this is super to see everybody out on a sunny June day. And it's amazing. So, I'm here about your subject that you're talking about today. And because it's a subject kind of near and dear to my heart in that, the money aspect of it. Seward had a wonderful citizen who loved Seward dearly, Seward Cantha. It's, yeah, Seward Cantha, Susan Cantha. She was a resident for a long time, she was a Seward Harbor employee. And she passed away unfortunately at a very young age of 65 in 2010 from cancer. But upon her passing, she gave a lot of gifts to the city of Seward. I believe the Seward Foundation has an endowment in her name. She sparked the Seward Manor's memorial with seed money for $25,000. And she, her main purpose on it was to beautify Seward. All of her projects, she was hoping would go to that. Seward, Susan was an avid walker year round. And one of the things that she missed sorely was a year round open toilet, public facility downtown, on the waterfront downtown area. And so, one of the gifts that she gave to the city was $100,000 to be put to a winter toilet down near the pavilion. Well, we all know that $100,000 isn't going to go very far for that. But in the years that the loop, the heat loop was being planned, there was a plan to put that $100,000 into the bucket of money to develop the heat loop. And it was thought that the loop could go down to the source, and they saw in the plan that it is kind of going down towards the pavilion. It would loop in the existing bathroom that's down there and would provide hot water and heat the room with the loop. And that $100,000 would be added. Unfortunately, that $100,000 went away last summer when somebody in the city decided to use it for porta potties, ADH compliant, transient porta potties. I haven't seen them down there, I don't know where they are, need to go, to the heat loop. We think the heat loop is a great idea. I think incorporating the bathroom, it would not only avoid added costs in doing something like that for the bathroom, it was the donor's intent of that $100,000, and would actually generate some revenue for the city in that if the showers were there in the wintertime, people could use the facility. So, I understand my time's up, and again, that was the donor's intent, $100,000 for the heat loop, good idea. And I apologize, I have to leave because I have a business that people are waiting for me. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for taking the time to speak, Deb.
Madam Chair, I do not have anyone else on the table.
Okay, is there any in the audience who wishes to speak? Please.
I too am here to speak in support of Resolution 2022-06. And as, it's good to see you all here, full quorum, wonderful to see. I too spent many years sitting around the dais there as a member of PACAB and served with, I think, three or four of you in that capacity. As the maker of the motion that led to this resolution that's before you today, I am here to speak in support of it. I, I think it's going to be very incumbent upon this process that we're in to be able to retain the service and keep the services of Andy Baker in that effort. Because this is a technical system, it's one that's going to require his knowledge and his expertise on behalf of the efforts to secure additional funding and to proceed forward hopefully with building it. And he's very passionate, as you all know, about heat pumps and this technology. Probably the most passionate man in the United States about this stuff. He's in Washington DC as I speak, presenting and attending the Atmos 22 Conference. Atmos is the organization that supports and promotes natural refrigeration in the world. So, he's there as a participant, speaking on behalf, and he speaks in support of this project while he's there. I just want you to know that, and he plans on making some visits and contacts while he's in Washington DC. This body has supported this in the past and has, I think he will do so today, and I ask for that summary. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving forward, can we get approval of the agenda and consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda, let me second.
Did you get that, Madam clerk?
I did.
I don't have a...
Any changes?
Any changes? And now that I've requested the changes, there are a couple in front of me that I wanted to bring over.
Jaffa?
Yes.
Hockeck?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wilkers?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Chair Homdell?
Yes.
Your agenda and consent agenda are approved, and you have no items on consent.
I move to...
I don't have a, I don't have my prompts for exactly, to make this legal, so we'll get through it.
Okay, Resolution 2022-006 is requesting authorization from the city council and provide services as authorized by the manager, and as requested by the ad hoc committee in its effort to identify available funding sources to continue to...
Now, can I entertain your motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2022-006, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We will now open it for discussion. And I would like to start the discussion with some edits. And these edits have been requested from the city administration, and they are all in the initial paragraph of the resolution. These edits would result in the initial paragraph reading like this. "A resolution of the Port and Commerce Advisory Board of the City of Seward, Alaska, strike requesting authorization from, insert city, manager, to, strike, issue a purchase order, insert, enter into a professional services agreement with," strike the word "to, "your Clean Energy to consult with the Heat Loop Ad Hoc Committee and provide services as authorized by the, insert city, manager, strike, and, as requested by the ad hoc committee, strike, in its efforts to identify available funding sources to continue the ground source Seward District heat system project to completion, and insert, in an amount not to exceed $19,000."
Approved. Accept the amendment.
Is there any...
I'll second.
Okay. Moving seconded, could we have the vote?
Do you have any discussion for it?
I'll speak on the motion.
Okay.
The language that's proposed is that cleans up the initial resolution, explains toward professional services agreement, and it removes some of the unnecessary language. For instance, we know what the, no problem with the new language, I think it's clearer, simpler, to the point.
Thank you, Member Jaffa. The city would like to speak.
Could I offer just one more recommended amendment? Could we add the three words "and appropriating funds"?
Where would you like to insert that?
After the word "committee" at the end of the title, because in appropriation, and perhaps we'll talk about... So, if we could add the words "and appropriating funds"?
So, it would...
So, it's...
In an amount not to exceed $19,520. Any more discussion?
If there's no objection, I'll just add that into your amendment?
Any objection?
I have a question on that.
Yes.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, why would the city need to, it's a simple question for the system manager, but why would the city need to appropriate funding? Maybe just explain that.
Because the funds weren't included in the budget, we need to set aside the funds to pay for this.
Isn't there, isn't there an outstanding account for this fund, for this project?
Not for this purpose, no.
So, this appropriation would not in any way affect whatever money is currently available?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. I want to speak to the letter that we had from a member of the public...
We have to speak to this first.
Okay, well, that, it applies to this. This cleans up, I think, the concern that that citizen had. What we were doing was just going out and just sort of like opening it up to just start spending money. And that's not the help of Andy Baker and your Clean Energy to get the funding that is required. And so, I think that this is a reasonable thing, less than $20,000...
You're still speaking to the changes in that...
Right, in consulting fees is, I think, a reasonable thing to do. Because we need, we need, we need help from Andy, I think, to move this project. So, I'm in favor of this.
Okay. Any other comments on the changes being proposed to the wording of the initial statement of the resolution? That is all we're, all we're discussing right now are those changes. Okay, seeing none?
Okay, voting on the amendment to, to update the title of the resolution, Hughes?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Wilkers?
Yeah.
Hockeck? Our new motion is back on the floor.
Thank you, Madam clerk. Could you please read the title again as amended as we move into the discussion of the resolution itself?
Resolution 2022-006 is recommending the city council to direct the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with your Clean Energy to consult with the Heat Loop Ad Hoc Committee in the amount not to exceed $19,520 in appropriating funds.
Thank you. And I would like to speak right away, which is not something that I normally do. I would like to start off by saying I am strongly in favor of grassroots efforts that lighten the burden on our elected officials and paid people within the city. And I'm extremely impressed with this, to take this initiative and effort on themselves. That being said, I'm going to state that I'm not in favor of this resolution for a couple of specific reasons. When you look at the resolution that created the ad hoc committee, there's, -004. In their, I believe it's the 11th whereas clause, this committee is taking sources to continue the ground source project. And in section two, this committee will advise council on construction methods and long-term maintenance. Those are the only two things that this committee was tasked with specifically by this resolution. When you look at the resolution that is before us now, 2022-006, we are being asked specifically, should, the wording used is, "Should the ad hoc committee discover a potential opportunity to apply for grant funding through Clean Energy?" When we're looking at the dollar amounts in the $19,520 that is presented, fully over half of that is to applications. While I fully support the fact that this is the place to go when we need information to finish grant applications, I completely support that. However, the committee was formed to find funding sources, and nothing in this ad hoc committee came forward to do. So, for that reason, I am not going to support this resolution because I feel like the work that the money is being proposed to be used for is for the work that would come after we have identified funding sources and is not permitted under the scope of work that the committee is assigned to fulfill. So, by... To remember the...
I guess, but maybe I'm mistaken. I was, I'm assuming based on all of this paperwork, that, and conversations that I've had with Andy in the past, that he's well aware of funding sources, and basically this would allow him to help us get those funds. But maybe somebody on the committee could speak to that.
From my perspective, what is lined out in black and white in front of us, there is nothing that speaks to Andy Baker helping to find funding. What is written in front of us is the money that he spent to help apply for grants. So, because of the wording, that's how I read it, and why I have this standpoint I do. Any other discussion?
Because I apologize if I don't know the exact administrative format for exercising those roles, but I am on that committee. I'm an active participant. I have reviewed, reviewed the documents and also listened to the arguments that our committee has, the ad hoc committee, and I have to be clear who I'm speaking for, the ad hoc committee has unanimously felt that Andy Baker had a significant contribution to the efforts that was outlined by the resolution. Now, to speak to the chair's issue about specific components of his proposal, it may have been better for him just to say that the total number of hours and services. That may have made the chair feel more comfortable about the opportunity to use him as his expertise allows. I do not believe that this resolution prevents or requires that only those, for any of those funds, that heard discretion or the system manager's discretion, so that the total of the $19,000 could be utilized as practical. I think a strict reading of that may in fact overlook the concept, which is having an expert available as needed. Now, along with that, and I appreciate the chair's comments about a citizen group. The citizen group minimum wage is over $1,000, and at many people's wages like my own, I don't get quite as much as Andy Baker, but I nearly. For Merrick Tugus and myself, who voluntarily went to an Alaska sustainable energy farm, which really very were enlightening and will eventually pay for, in learning about what they had to offer. There are a great deal that this committee can do on its own. But there is clearly a position that we will get to in our pursuit of those grants, that we will need this council from Andy, from your Clean Energy. We will not, is available, but until you get to meet with that funding source and determine for sure that there's a place to go with a grant way proposals to go in. So, our group is doing a variety of things to facilitate the entry to those fund sources. But it's that, there is a draft writer that is available through the city contracts already. And our, the ad hoc group will be asking for more information about how that's done. The ad hoc group does not intend to give specialty. So, the long and short of what this resolution is, is to get your Clean Energy aboard. It's, it was the initial effort was to try to get them aboard. This current resolution is much more prescriptive in how he is brought aboard, retaining the exercise of how funds are spent to the manager with the advice and request of the ad hoc group. So, it's not just one big service contract that allows your Clean Energy to grow off. Andy Baker personally, as a principal in your Clean Energy, knows a lot about where these grants are. And it would be beneficial for him to be brought into this group in an official way so that begin with the support of your Clean Energy. So, there's a coordinated effort, in a coordinated way to meet the...
It seems like this is not a, this is not a contract for $19,520 worth of services, but more as a, that's his estimate of what it could take. And this is expert, as far as I know, in the state to have these services available, seems like it would be a good idea. But I do agree with the chair that it is slightly procure these services, I don't have any objection to it.
Any other discussion?
Just basically, this project's been ongoing for quite a while to try to get it through. I was one of the PACAB members back when we started it all, Darryl was chair at that time. And at that time, Andy came in multiple times to speak to us, to demonstrate what could be done. And he is a very legitimate business, and he was instrumental in the Alaska Sea Life Center obtaining and creating their heat system. I have no problem supporting this, and it will be to the benefit of this.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'd like to speak one more time just to reiterate that while I completely understand and agree with Member Jaffa about everything regarding, and the others who have spoken regarding Andy Baker's required, I just want to remind the committee that the ad hoc, or the board, that the ad hoc committee in their resolution is directed to identify funding sources. This resolution specifically says that they are requesting funding for, for services in the effort of applying for grants, which is not something that they have been tasked with doing. They have been tasked with only finding opportunities. The way the resolution before us is presented, 006, it is, "Should the potential opportunity to apply for grant funding come up, then they want access to technical support for those funding." And in 2006, "Whereas the ad hoc committee may request the paid surfaces, services of YCE on a billable hourly basis, advisory board." So, I strongly feel like if we approve this, we are approving actions outside of what we said the committee would be doing at the start. To also apply for grants, that should have been listed in the scope of work that created, opposed this resolution because I feel like it steps outside of what we've already created.
No, chair.
Sorry.
I thought that meant they would apply for it, right? Because there isn't anybody else on staff that's looking for, or applying for...
That the, that this committee was going to do something to assist the manager, who has a lot of other things on the table, who had been doing this, had been carrying along to some degree along with their other things. But this, this ad hoc committee was designed specifically to carry that ball. And to limit it because of a particular, the partisan particular word, I believe, is contrary to the intent, which was to identify and pursue grant opportunities. And in that, it's become clear that the advice of a consultant, a particular kind of a consultant, has a great... There was an earlier proposal to the city which was, which was not acted on. This was written as essentially a placeholder to provide an opportunity, and the chapters of his proposal, $60 an hour, which is what his charge rate, rate is. And you'll notice that each of those categories is at the $160 an hour. And each of those categories would normally be priced, if done by separate people, probably a different... It's pretty clear in his proposal that he was intending to establish a threshold. That threshold does not have to all be spent, there's nothing in here that says it will all be spent. It probably will, but not to its good reason. And it's not enough anyway to get this thing done. But the reality is that this is to get, keep this thing moving. And the group that's charged with keeping it moving is the ad hoc group, and the opportunity to bring in a consultant, a paid consultant.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, is it possible, before we take a vote on this resolution, to authorize the ad hoc committee to work on grants? And then have a vote on that and then on this resolution? Or does that mess everything up?
I feel like that would be the cleanest way to do it. However, we can't do that in and of ourselves. We would have to, because we recommended to the city, and then the city council. And then the city council created the committee based on that resolution that was passed. So, we would have to make the recommendation, take it to the city. The city would have to change the scope of work for the ad hoc committee, and then it would have to come back to us. So, I agree that would be the cleanest way to, to handle the semantics of what we're asking here. But it is cumbersome.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
May I ask administration, so is administration supportive of this resolution?
I do have one more suggested amendment with regarding, that body was going to, would provide that information to the public city administration and to the city council. And then at that time, we would engage with our grant writer, with R&amp;M Engineering, and then bring in YCE to, let's say we're doing a project in the harbor. Norm would reach out to R&amp;M and bring on Ben Coleman or one of the other grant writers. And Ben would work with Norm because Norm's the project, subject matter expert. So, you do need a technical piece, you also need a grant writing piece. So, the programmatic side and the technical side, you need both to pursue a grant and be successful. But I guess, so my question here is, based off of this, who's going to be writing the grant then? And I think that's pretty important, like functionally. And I think it's important that that's clearly, that message is clearly provided to Andy so that he understands what's expected of him here. Are you asking him to go find grants and be applying for them? Because if that's the case, my recommendation would be that $19,000 is not enough funding to do that. If you're going to ask him to search for grants and go through the application, that's, it's simply not enough time in this proposal to do both of those two things. If you're just asking for, once, once a funding source is found, to say, "Andy, at this point, now we've got $19,000 allocated for a services agreement for you to interact as the subject matter expert." So, and we are supportive, I just want to make sure that we're giving YCE clear, clear expectations. Here's what we need you to step in and provide. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, not really.
We are supportive, yes.
Yeah, okay. I guess I have a follow-up question for the committee then. Who, who does, who does the committee envision writing the grant, once the, whatever the grant is, once it's been identified?
I would say that my understanding in, from the creation of the ad hoc committee was that this was a group of citizens who were going to... was that this was a group of citizens who were going to research potential opportunities exactly as lined out by Mr. Sol, and then bring a list of opportunities to us to present to city council, which would then give city council and the city manager opportunity to look at that, those funding sources and allocate resources to apply for them as it made sense, including the use of Andy Baker at that time and whatever grant writing capabilities we had. That was my assumption in the creation of the ad hoc committee was that they would, their deliverable would be a list of potential funding sources, whether that was all at one time or as they found them, and then allow city council the freedom to determine the best way to respond to those. So, that was my, my assumption.
Can I ask the assistant manager, what was the nature of the additional change to the resolution title?
The appropriating funds?
No, we got that. I thought you said another one.
No, I was just saying that in addition to adding, to updating the and appropriating funds into the title, we're gonna need to add a section, a fourth section with the actual appropriation of funds, whatever that may be. So, we need, we need, we need a section that will state funding in the amount of, and then $19,520 is hereby appropriated from general unassigned fund, unassigned fund balance account number 01000-0000-3400. The finance department contracted services account number 01000-1140-7009 within the 2022 operating budget. And I can provide that verbiage.
I was just gonna say, can I request that amendment? So, I'm going to request that we add, that we amend the resolution to include section four.
Actually, if you can make that a section three, and then section, the current section three to section four.
So, I will make a motion that we amend the resolution to include a section three, as read by the assistant city manager, move the current section three down to section four. Can I get, um?
Oh, second.
Any discussion on adding that to the resolution? Okay, can we get a vote on the amendment?
Okay, voting on the amendment to add a new section three, and you have the language. Hughes?
Yes.
Jaffa?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Walkers?
Yes.
Pacet?
Yes.
And Chair Hombdal?
Yes.
That amendment is approved. Your main motion is back on the floor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution itself? Okay, seeing none, can we call for a vote?
Okay, voting on approval of resolution 2022-006 as amended. Jaffa?
Yes.
Pacet?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Walkers?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Chair Hombdal?
No.
Resolution, that resolution is approved.
And that concludes our new business. We are now moving on to citizen comments. Is there anyone?
Yeah, I am happy that you didn't rush that much. I just, I get involved with it, just long-term, but I have the interest in, good things happening here too. And I think this is an opportunity that's really, really good. It's been around now with grant money for four years. And it's applied through, to retain that grant money every few months. And I think there's gonna be a time when they run out of patience to get us Clean Energy aboard. So, I'm really happy that we didn't just hang it all up here on some sort of semantic show of a few thousand dollars. I think there's opportunity to bring in part of their money. And they need some big help right from here on. And if you wanna make this thing happen, you have to move.
Any other citizen comments? Please.
I know you have to have a record here.
Thank you.
I just appreciate your support today and I appreciate all the concerns about the scope and, but I have confidence that the city council will, in their deliberative processes, will take that into account and hopefully they'll, they'll act affirmatively on the recommendation that this body has made today. I just wanted to speak briefly to what Deborah had to say, Alderman had to say, regarding the possibility or the opportunity to provide heated restroom and shower facility in the location she was talking about in response to the, trying to meet the, at least the tenor of the gift that was given to the city. And that was that this project will provide an opportunity to provide, because of its location, heat, heat source for restrooms and showers that are always needed in this community. And so, I just wanted to speak to that briefly and remind the board that that was part of the opportunity here with this project. Thanks for your support.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Hi, Casey Warner. I just wanted to thank you guys for passing this resolution and I'm excited to see this project move forward. Although I haven't been able to be as active as I would like, I am following what PACAB and the ad hoc committee is doing. So, thanks for your work and I look forward to see what comes in the future.
Thank you. It appears there are no more citizens to comment in the audience, so we will move on to board and administration's comments and response to citizens' comments. And let's start on this side with Members.
Thank you. Well, on the resolution we passed, I do believe that this is gonna help move us forward faster. And this does seem to be a project that keeps getting stalled repeatedly. And I do have confidence that council and the city manager will, will handle this appropriately to get the help needed to the ad hoc committee. I'd also like to thank Deborah Alderman for bringing that bit of Seward history to light. That's very helpful and knowing the reasons why things are around town is nice. And I too would like to see heated year-round facilities by the waterfront. Good seeing everybody. Thank you.
Member Hughes?
Yes. I'm glad we pushed this forward because it's been an ongoing effort over the years to try to get this to keep going and actually accomplish something that will be mostly beneficial for the city of Seward. And as Board Member Smith said, I actually knew Susan. I worked with her many years down there at the harbor and I, I think we most certainly do not want to forget that part of the project. It's too important to the character of the city of Seward.
Member Pecat?
Yeah, I'm glad that we passed this. I, I had a conversation with Andy Baker a couple of months ago and at that point, he had said to me, I can't keep talking to you people and not get paid because he's already had hours and hours that had not been under any kind of contract. And so, it's not surprising to me that this came forward to us because it's, it would, I think, be impossible for the ad hoc committee to really move forward and be productive without Andy's help. And so, basically, we're paying for Andy's help and I think that that's appropriate. And so, you know, I apologize to the community if, if you're thinking that this wasn't what the ad hoc committee was supposed to do. I actually, I do think, even though the wording might not be specific, I think it's within their scope and I think that if there's a hope for funding this project and get, I don't think we're gonna get it done without Andy's help. And so, I think we're, we did a good thing here, I do believe, today. The only other comment I had is that there was an opportunity to attend an ocean scientific drilling workshop in Washington DC next week and I threw my name in the hat and got picked. So, I am going, I won't be here for council next Monday because I will be in Washington DC for this ocean scientific drilling workshop and I will bring a report back to PACAB.
Make sure you talk to our senators too.
I won't have any time. I mean, this is like, this is fly there, do that, fly home, but.
Congratulations. That's exciting. Member Jaffa?
I'd like to thank the whole board for showing up today. It was, it was great to see y'all, you know, in the middle of summer, but that you came out for this special meeting, one that I worked to develop. And I appreciate your attendance. I appreciate Chair Hombdal bringing this resolution to the, to the group. There was a plan for two members, two board members to bring it in case the chair was not able to do it, but she was able to do it. Appreciate that. I also appreciate her, her comments and, and concerns. I think in the end, the city is well-served with this and that's the purpose of all of us, is to find the best way forward for the city in a responsible way. The merits of the resolution itself, you know, it's great to think that this is the panacea, this is gonna do everything, but let's see how it develops. In the end, we can look back and say this was a milestone or, you know, this was the thing that we needed to propel us forward. I will say that there, I did not give a committee report, an ad hoc committee report. And I'm not entirely sure because of the nature of how it was formed, the group was formed as an ad hoc to PACAB. PACAB is on hiatus, it's a little bit difficult, but there is activity going on. We have regular meetings every two weeks of what our meetings are scheduled. Our members are involved in several things, including researching potential grant sources, defining the, the scope of the project itself. This resolution was handed to the ad hoc group as a four-building project because that was what the original grant was. Quite simply, we've determined that there's gonna be a phase one, phase two of this. The words that are thrown around, there's options and all, but it's in fact a four-building project, but it may not get all built at once. It may not even, it may even be a six or seven building project in the end, we would hope. You know, that's something we're looking at. And then the ad hoc group is also working that community outreach to find our strength. And it's clear in our research of how grants work, the stronger the community base, the more possible the grants are. So, we are working towards that effort too. Again, thank you for showing up and I'm glad the meeting was concise and the public and everyone who's wrote letters or spoke in this regard.
Thanks. Number one.
I'm just, I guess I can reiterate what everybody else said, but I'm happy to see that this is moving forward. It's been, I think, one of the first resolutions was seven years ago that we started talking about this. And it's something that I know a lot of the citizens in Seward are passionate about and I think it's, this is a great step to move forward and I'm excited to see how, how it rolls out from here, for sure.
Member Walkers?
Yeah, happy I was able to make it and support this resolution. I would hope in the fall, when we start getting back together, we might take another look at the ad hoc committee and see if maybe they don't need a little broader discretionary or a little more authority so we don't run into this bind again. That's it. Good to see y'all.
Thank you. I also would like to thank Deb for bringing that piece of Seward history. The idea of a heated bathroom down by the waterfront is super exciting. I also am, as I stated at the very beginning, I love it when citizens who really care about something get together. I think that's how government should work. When we, like we're doing here, when you volunteer your time for the things you're passionate about, it makes all of the community run smoother. I'm super excited about what the possibility of the heat group project can mean. I've spent time in communities in Sweden where all of their sidewalks, their bike paths, their streets are heated with heat pumps with different ways of reclaiming energy. And I think it's just the tip of the iceberg, so I'm super excited about that. I, I know that the current ad hoc committee sunsets in December and I'm sure that there's a good possibility there will be more to be done after that. And I agree with Fred that when we look at what we're asking or allowing or giving this group the ability to do, that we make sure that they have all the space they need to, to do the good work that they're trying to do. And thank everybody for coming out. City comments?
We will, we'll get this resolution put on the agenda for the June 27 city council meeting, which is the next available meeting.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn.
I apologize. I'd like to thank the administration for their efforts in this regard, both the manager and assistant manager have, and the work have all been very much involved in getting this resolution to us today and in their efforts. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And on that note, a great one, we will adjourn this meeting at 12:55.